Ms. Wendy Keener?
Here.
Mr. Richard Willhauer, Mr. Clint Russell.
Here.
Mr. Drew Turner.
Here.
Dr. Jason Cook.
Here.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask for you to be here with us during this meeting and help us make the best decisions for our students and for the community. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, agenda item number four, the consent agenda, items A through I.
I would like to add if, uh, on item B, the purchase orders, there is a purchase order for American Airlines and I'm, uh, I'm not sure what number it is, 421, I believe, but, uh, we've got to prove it, but I also have to make you aware that the American Airlines due to graduation, we have a couple of siblings that are going to graduation that night and going to fly down to meet the academic team in New Orleans, and so the board has to be aware that since we're using gate money for student travel, I'm going to read this, this is from our auditor. My opinion, this is quote, "My opinion, this is not a senior class trip or outing just for fun. So since it falls in line with academics and the board agrees that it helps to forward the educational mission of the school district, it is allow, it will be allowable to be paid from the general fund." So, but you guys have to understand and agree that it is part of the educational mission and it's outside of just fun or a senior class. So if you guys agree to that, I guess by agreeing to this, uh, PO, you're agreeing to those terms. And this is from the auditor. He's good with it if you guys deem it that way. So.
So then unless anybody has any questions, I make a motion that we approve agenda item four, A through I.
Second.
Okay. Voting is now open. Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item number five, report on revenue collections and expenditures.
Uh, attendance thirteen forty-three, it's been very steady throughout, which is kind of atypical across the districts, across the state, so that's good. Uh, the April is even a better, we had a, we finished April much better than we did last year and in relative terms to the month before. So again, we are sitting by our terms in a very good situation and, you know, the, it will fall quickly whenever we make the three months of payments. But, uh, we're sitting in things that happened in Oklahoma City over the past few days and yesterday was sign and die, so it's, uh, the cell phone policy did pass, uh, we will, the OSSBA has sent out what they are suggesting for us to look at at our June board meeting. And so coupled with that and our old proposal, we will bring that back to the table. We have to have a proposal, uh, at one of our, you know, next month, we have two meetings, whether June and July both, but. So look for the June sixth, uh, for the policy to be in place, or at least not in place, for a policy to be approved by you guys to be in effect, and that is by state law, we have to have that. Uh, the virtual day bill went through. There's still a lot of discussion. When I spoke with Representative Moore in his office that morning, he still says, and you guys can speak more, he said if the word "and" is not "in," then it's an implied "or." Well, what he implores implies "or," the State Department's not, so there's going to be a fight on that. But according to the State Department, they've taken out the ability to use virtual days unless it's a catastrophic and state of emergency weather day, and even at that, you can only use two days of six hours, so twelve hours. So I believe that next year will be our last year of virtual days as we know it. The year after that, we'll start looking at either going, those ten or eleven virtual Mondays go traditional or revamping the calendar or whatever, but the, using virtual days as, as we're used to, I don't think will happen after this coming school year. That has happened. Uh, one bill that I was really disappointed in, and I don't think it was voted down, I think it just never got heard, was the retire and hi- rehire that did not pass, so there still is a cap on teachers the first three years after they retire, they're capped at thirty thousand, which I was, I don't understand the other side of that. To me, it's a, we're losing good teachers and it benefits them financially. It even benefits the district financially, and they've done all the studies to show that TRS can, uh, can still survive and even be in a better situation, but apparently they know more than TRS and everybody else. So that did not get approved, and so we will still be under the cap for three years for our people that decide to retire and come back, and I do know that we had several that were willing or were wanting to do that again. That would have been beneficial to both sides, but it's a moot point at this point. So anyway, that did not pass and, uh, so that's my report.
I have a question about the virtual day. So let, let's say we have another winter storm in twenty-seven where it's, you know, ten below zero a- across the state and no one's in. We can't use a virtual day then, we just have to tack however many days that we're out onto the calendar like we used to?
So that was what I told him in his office, and I said, "I get it," and I, there, there are problems with virtual days, but I told him, I said, "But I underst- it's my opinion that a virtual week in January is much more efficient than tacking on a week at the, after Memorial Day." You know, I, and he said, "Well, I never thought about it that way." And I said, "Even if," and I, I, we all agree, traditional's better than virtual in that case, but to sit there and be in the middle of chapter fifteen in algebra and to sit there and go from a whole week and then have nothing and then plug that in afterwards and then just go back after state testing when half the student body has got other things going, whether it's vacation or, you know, teams have got team camps or all these things, I don't, I believe that it's not near as effective instruction, and I think it turns into just satisfying that day. They, all I can say is, yes, to this point, that will not count and we will be tacking on days. If we continue with our model, one proposal that the, the staff and I talked about is possibly every day we're out for a snow day, that very next Monday it becomes a traditional day and make them up throughout the year as opposed to tacking them on at the end of the year. You know, you're going to have, to me, if I'm, and I know we're not on that, but that is the most effective. If, with the true serum in me, I think that's best rather than tacking them on. Is it going to be perfect for everybody? No, because somebody's going to have a doctor's appointment scheduled that Monday that they can't change. I get that, but no matter what, when you go to add a day back, you're going to face that. So I would rather, and if we miss, you know, four days, then the next four Mondays, bam, 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 we make them up there because outside of, of the governor declaring them a state of emergency and once you use the twelve hours, you're out. So that would be, that's a discussion that we'll have probably December or January, but that's, that's the thoughts that the principals and, and I have kind, kind of discussed. So.
Okay. Uh, agenda item six, principals report.
You broke her heart.
Um, so as you know, the end of school's crazy and we're in the crazy. Um, band last night had a concert and tomorrow they're going on a trip to Branson, I believe. And then next week on Wednesday, we're going to have a school-wide performance for their jazz stuff, so all the kids will get to watch them. And baseball right now is at regionals and if they, and then, and they win this, this is super regionals, I guess they won regionals, super regionals, and then they can go to state if they win. Um, ag, this was the state convention week. Um, if you guys have never been to that, it's quite a production. I, I, last year was my first year to go and wow. Um, and we, we had four state champions. Will Willhauer was beef entrepreneurship, Bryce Burlock, outdoor recreation, Wyatt Sterling was poultry production, and Delaney Gibson sheep production. And then we did get three kids with their state FFA degrees, Samantha Langford, Bryce Burlock, and Will Willhauer. And this was the first time in our program history that we became a national three-star superior rated chapter. So that put us in a drawing for a truck, which sadly we did not win. But we were there three times for that. Uh, track, we have kids right now at the state track meet in Plainview, and we've got five of them that are competing today and tomorrow at that. Um, next week really starts the full swing of senior activities. We do the elementary walk-through on Thursday where we, everybody dresses up in their caps and gowns and walks through the elementary. It's pretty cool. And, um, and then senior finals, and then the next week is senior trip and all that other good stuff. So anyway, we're moving on.
What time we need to be there two weeks from tonight?
Uh, graduation? Um.
Start at six thirty or seven?
Seven. So I would say six fifteen. I think doors open at six fifteen.
I can't remember what time it was.
So I just wanted to say thank you to anyone who helped participate in making our little local event, our special Olympics event. Uh, agenda item number seven, citizens comments?
TJ.
I'm sorry, TJ.
Well, I was going to add to.
Sorry.
High school, if you guys didn't see the play, uh, last week, they did, you know, those kiddos did a very, very impressive job. It was very, very, very worth it.
Uh, agenda item number seven, any citizens comments? Okay, agenda item number eight, discussion and possible appointment of vice president.
Okay, with Richard resigning from the president's spot, we automatically, the vice president, much to Wendy's chagrin, takes over the, the president, and so, as I said, it's not a vote. You can't vote twice in one year, so you appoint somebody to sit in the vice presidency.
I'll make a motion to appoint Richard in the vice presidency.
That's right.
Yeah.
And there's no votes, that's.
Oh, okay.
If you're appointing him, that's.
We're appointing him.
Yeah, so, okay, that's, Richard will be there, okay.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number nine, discussion and vote to approve or disapprove annual amendment to renew the food service management company contract renewal for school year twenty-five, twenty-six between Inola and Tahoe.
Okay, this is, everything is part of the normal billing, uh, next year, a year from now, Hillary can speak more to this, we are required to go back out to bid, that will be the end of our cycle, but not just because he's here, I, this has been the best year. I have not, nothing has made it to me, and so I appreciate your efforts, and we've spread him pretty thin. He's at, uh, between Catoosa and here, and, uh, it works out where Catoosa's out. On Fridays, we're out on Mondays, so he's always here on that part, and he's the one that's responsible for the good cookies here, and so, uh, it's pretty normal. But again, next year, we will have to go out to the competitive bidding cycle part, so. Hillary, do you have anything that you need to add to that?
No, I've had, I've had no complaints and I can, I was doing a great job.
So I'm making a motion to approve agenda item number nine.
Second.
Okay. Voting is now open. Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item number ten, discussion and vote to approve or disapprove contract for pediatric assessment and counseling services for school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
It's a normal one with Tracy, and Tracy's recommended that we continue that, so.
Make a motion to approve the contract for pediatric assessment counseling services for the school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Okay. Voting is now open. Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item number eleven, discussion, discussion and vote to approve or disapprove OSSBA employment services, service agreement for school year twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six.
Same as last year, still seven dollars per employee, so nothing has changed on that as well.
Make a motion to approve agenda item number eleven.
Second.
Voting is now open. Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item number twelve, discussion and vote to approve or disapprove the contract between Oklahoma Consulting and Accounting Services and Inola Public Schools for the year twenty-five, twenty-six.
This is the company that whenever Ms. Dyer retired, we hired this person. I mean, this company, they've been great for us. Uh, Andy Fugate is actually the one that's responsible for us, so we have the, she's in town, works out really well, she's up here anytime she needs and always answers phone calls. The, uh, it's just, it went up six hundred dollars because we have more things that we've added, but went from, but it's still cheaper than hiring a full-time payroll lady, so.
I make a motion to approve agenda item number twelve.
Second.
Voting is now open. Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item thirteen, discussion and possible board action on the superintendent's recommendation to grant non-district administrative rights in the grant management system on the Oklahoma State Department of Education's SSO to Barlow Educational Services Representative Wayne Beam. Uh, said non-district administration rights authorize the Barlow Educational Services Representative full access to enter and submit application forms, claims on behalf of the district in consultation with the district superintendent.
I'm not smart enough to type that up. That came straight from, there was, I got an email Wednesday morning that to continue to do that, we have to have that board approved, and so that literally came down the pike last forty-eight hours. Uh, Wayne, we've had Wayne, we've had Barlow for as long as I can do. He does all the federal programming and he has his hands on all this stuff. It just allows him the access and GMS to continue to do what he does.
Make a motion to approve agenda item thirteen?
Second.
Voting is now open. Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item fourteen, discussion and vote to approve or disapprove Inola Public School Agreement between inter-local cooperation purchasing system.
Okay, this is something that has started a couple of years and we haven't joined up until now. Uh, the, the one that I'm looking at specifically today is called TOPS, and it's the Oklahoma Purchasing System. It is, it takes all of the problem, I mean, all of the issues away from when we talk about competitive billing or competitive bidding, anything over a hundred thousand dollars in building part, we have to either go through this organization or this, uh, agreement or we have to do competitive bidding. The problem I have with competitive bidding is it's going to be the lowest price. Specifically, the reason this is on here, and, and it'll stay on there and it's great for anything, but this is because of the scoreboard and the turf that we're going to be purchasing from, with T-Mobile money. Okay? Uh, and, and we will talk about the turf at the end of this talk here, but if we don't do it this way, it's a lot harder and we basically have to go with the cheapest turf because unless we build it to spec and all this. So what we've done is we've taken and we've got down, we've talked to all these vendors, we told them what we needed, what we wanted, and we have kind of got the bidding, what competitively for us, for our sake, but now legally, we have to explain and use this TOPS organization. Uh, TOPS, I've got it here, and I think it was included if your iPad was working whenever we downloaded it, but it, it's nothing to us as far as finance. It's, uh, it's all on the vendors and this company to, uh, but once we decide on the turf vendor, then they have, they're already vetted through these guys and they're part of there, but they will have to make sure that the bid that they sent us is no more than ninety percent of what it can be. So it, it's a protection, it's another level for us. And again, the biggest thing for us, it takes away, it gives us all the compliance for Title sixty-one, which is the competitive bidding, and this, the way this is written, it's the lowest best, or lowest competitive, uh, bid. So before, uh, and once we agree, again, there's no cost and we will be part of this, it actually allows us to buy, there's all kinds of things on there, comes to desk or furniture or whatever, but scoreboards and turf are on there. So before you approve that, I would like to talk a little bit about the turf. I, uh, there are, we have come up with the final, and this is pretty time sensitive because they have to, that's one and that's the other. Uh, part of T-Mobile, they didn't give us a whole lot of things that we had to do, but one of them is we have to have this done by August first, and that's for football practice to start. Now, we have went through the processes, T-Mobile, all they really ask is that we get something that can be proud of for life. Uh, most of these companies are six to eight-year warranties. Uh, T-Mobile has said, put on the price that they have to give us ten years, so everything is at least ten-year guaranteed. Uh, we'll get into the school boards later, but again, they're, they're all facing that. They all have to have ten-year guarantee. They all have to be done by August first, and they all have to give us a maximum price that they can't come back, say, "Oh, we didn't realize this." It's going to be another fifty thousand to do this. In the turf world, that's very relevant because when they go to pull off the current turf, if we don't have that in there, they could say, "Oh, we didn't know that this base is bad" and we're going, it's going to cost you four hundred thousand to get the base up to code or whatever. So there's a maximum price on there. These two, I felt like were the, the two of the, were the two best that could meet them. There are other great companies out there, but the bright T-Mobile pink, uh, pushes some of the timelines back. Those are examples that they sent to them. Whichever company we go with, we will finalize the, the actual design as far as the striping and the T-Mobile part. But, uh, when you get down to it, the products are very similar, very, I mean, the, the nuts and bolts of the turf. Uh, the, the Pro to Geo is there a hundred thousand dollars cheaper. The Pro to Hellus is that they're on seventeen NFL fields, they're in Jerry's World, they're all over D1. It's what K-State put in last week. Uh, Geo surfaces, I believe, is a really great turf, but they're new to the game and they don't have the instant name credibility. They don't have any on the NFL fields. They've got several power four schools out there, so, but before we, it's a hundred and five thousand dollar difference. The warranties are both going to be ten years. They're both putting in the cushion, the cush pads to, uh, bring up the G-max for concussions and safety to meet. And, and I will say the Hellus deal, NFL's facing a billion-dollar concussion lawsuit, and that's why the teams are going with Hellus, so they feel like that part is safer. Geo will tell you that they're just as safe or more. And that's why the teams are going with Hellus, so they feel like that part is safer, Geo will tell you that they're just as safe or more. And the only other thing that I can find beside the difference of the price is that the cush pad that both of them are putting in. Hellus guarantees theirs for twenty-five years. Geo surfaces guarantees theirs twenty-five if you use Geo surface in ten to twelve years when you replace the turf. Hellus will, even if you don't replace it with Hellus, they will guarantee their, uh, Geo basically has a limited. Warranty is the term on it, so, we're talking about splitting hairs, guys, this is way, I mean, and to be honest with you. I did, T-Mobile, if we save, well, whatever we save out of that two million, once we buy the turf and once we buy the video board. Anything that we save underneath that can be used for Friday Night Lights facility upgrades. Such as LED lights, such as bleachers, such as track repairs, such as, I mean, anything that falls underneath Friday Night Lights facility upgrades. And so that, when we first started, I thought we were spending their money, so I wanted the Cadillac of everything, the biggest. Now that we save more, we get more. But again, I, I, these are both great companies, the salesmen, they're both local, I mean, close and they'll stand behind it and I've heard nothing, but. If I had a bad reference, I threw them out and these are the two that have stood the test of time as far as references. Hellus is what Clairemore Sequoia is putting in currently. Geo surfaces is what a lot of Arkansas schools have, it's, uh, it's at Shiloh Christian, it's at Springdale. They're out of Arkansas, so they're making their mark there, they're wanting to get to Oklahoma, supposedly that's why they're making such a big competitive price. I know Shawnee went to them, but Hellus is all over the place, I mean, as far as NFL and college, so. Any thoughts or opinions? We can't go wrong.
This includes the video board too.
No. It's, it's bid separately, so that top.
Those two, yeah.
And so the video board, we can, uh, right, that bottom includes it, the video board, we can come back with them or there's five video boards that I'm down to and we'll. That is not near as time-sensitive because. That didn't have to be done until basically the first scrimmage, this has to be done for the first practice and turf is a lot more time. Sensitive as far, requires a lot more time.
They, is the maintenance the same on these, depending on the company?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically, there is nothing to us, it's ten years of. T-Mobile said, we don't, T-Mobile don't wanna pay another dime and we, they don't want to put us a dime, so.
But don't you have to do some certain things with it?
Well, you can.
Like sweep it or whatever it is?
Now that part.
Shouldn't matter.
Well, it does matter, but I consider that routine in on us, when I first thought it was T-Mobile's money, I built in that they would come out four times a year and maintain it.
Right.
Now, I've taken off that because that is money that we could save, so that is without that part. One of those, and you can buy from either one, there's a ten thousand dollar sweeper that you can do it yourself. You know, we didn't do that the first go around, instead we paid like fifteen hundred dollars a time. But if this is guaranteed for ten years, that may be something that we take with the excess money and buy that groomer. To do our maintenance ourself and our, because, you know, it does have the crushed rubber and so over time it does get dispersed and you gotta clean it up a little bit. There is actually a Geo surfaces that have the, no rubber, it is fourteen months old. If I could tell the future, I, that'd be my favorite because there's no, doesn't end up at the locker room, doesn't end up in the washing machines. But, uh, it's just too new to, I mean, it's on no, no fields outside of high school field, they're trying to get their name out and they really wanted it. But, uh, it's more expensive, but the heat is like twenty degrees cooler because there's none of that black crushed rubber. It's very, very cool, but it's so new and I just, I hated to, if I've got Dallas's, if I got Jerry's World option or a new guy, it's just tough to pull the trigger on that.
How old is the field out there now? I can't remember when we put it in.
This is year eleven.
And the technology's still about the same, pretty much, besides what you just said with the newer?
I, I would say the technology has increased quite a bit. Uh, that one was guaranteed for eight years. They tell you eight years guarantee, you'll get ten and they help for twelve, well, we got eleven, so that was, and it was good. And the base seems to be good, you know, we don't have any sink holes or anything like that, so, but no, and it's, the, uh. With this cush pad, that is one thing, that would be maybe the only want. Sequoia couldn't afford it, couldn't put it in, they did, they chose not to, all the colleges and pro teams are putting it in, but it does bring up the G-max. Our current one doesn't have it, and so that would be part of the technology and they've got it built up where, like I said, it's twenty-five years, so. It will cycle through at least two, two turf cycles.
So whenever they redo this, they're, I mean, they're totally just taking this all the way down to. I mean, whatever's under their concrete or whatever.
It's rock.
Rock.
Yep.
Okay.
And, you know, they wanted to sit there and, and before we do it, I mean, some, so, some of the specs that, that everybody was bidding on. Was the twenty-five-year, uh, pad warranty, even though Geo's is limited warranty, at least ten years. All parts labor warranty on the turf itself, about a hundred and five thousand square feet on the football field. They are, they will be responsible in this bid for turfing the indoor facility. So there are about fourteen thousand five hundred square foot of indoor for the new indoor will be the same turf, which is a Matrix Helix forty-six. It's got also got a two-by-four eco nailer system in it, the nineteen-millimeter cush drain and a top. And so if they can adhere to those things, and I believe that both of those can, with the exception of the limited warranty, then. But I, obviously this is a major purchase, so I have to have your approval for the TOPS and the approval to spend more than twenty-five hundred dollars for this PO. But I don't have the PO because I don't know if it's Geo surfaces or Hellus.
The only thing I can add to the, the conversation is. The Hellus brand, uh. Tenkate is the largest manufacturer of the roadbed fiber that's used on all the highways. So when you go in a construction project on a highway or on the turnpike and you see all those big rolls of the synthetic black mat. They're the world's largest supplier of that.
So to make things worse. They're both Tenkata products, they're both under the Tenkata umbrella, and it's funny because. Tenkata, of course, don't care, Tenkata Geo's wanting us this way, but yes, so, and that's why I say they are very, very reputable on the, so. But yes, I, and the Hellus is, Hellus is the one that I'm familiar with just because they're older and that's what most people around here, if you go to Arkansas. Then most of them are Geo, but the guy's out of, uh, Bentonville or, he's over in your part of the world and so, I don't know if you've heard of him, but, so.
What's the, uh, construction time on it? I know you're gonna get it done by August first, but how long does it actually take them to?
They claim that if weather cooperates, it's a two and a half week from peel-off to ready to go. Now, they said they, because Oklahoma, one day of rain can mess things up and so, but over the summer. And that's why they need to get it, get it on their books to order the pink, that is a custom color, the pink T-Mobile and, uh. And they also have to be done no earlier than July fifteenth. Because as soon as they finish the football field, to keep costs low, they're gonna go do the indoor, and so the indoor has to, has been guaranteed to be ready for turf on July fifteenth. So I'm gonna say the month of July, they'll be here, couple weeks of football field, couple weeks of doing the baseball indoor.
So you're just looking for approval for us for you to make the best decision for the school? I mean, cause I'm at work, we could go back and forth, but obviously you're the one that has put, I'm assuming a lot of hours into this.
With all due respect.
Decision, yeah.
With all due respect, I need your blessing to either do one or I am certainly willing, wanting your guys' opinion if you, because here's the deal. If the prices were the same, I would go Hellus, name recognition, Jerry's World, SoFi Stadium in LA, all these things, I would go them. But I also know that I'm throwing, I'm putting a hundred and five thousand dollars that I could buy, be buying something else with that. And that is my dilemma, and so I just, I'm not throwing you under the bus, I'll make the call, but if you have a preference, is it worth a hundred and five thousand?
Thing would be, I don't know, cause a lot of people that I've talked to have said, you know, if the opportunity to flip the stands is there. They won't, that would be a huge thing for them, so if one of these would keep us from doing that. I would think we would try to do, you know. That's what I'm, that's what I wondered if it's even feasible or?
At this point, it would take, it would take more, now, and the caveat to that is if you wanna really get into things, and yes, I have spent many hours on this. Is if we flip it, then do we flip the Longhorn head at that time, or do we put the Longhorn head facing it right now? Currently or where we think it's gonna be, but if you flip it in midstream, it's two hundred and forty thousand dollars to pull up the thirty-five to thirty-five and flip it. So do you have it looking wrong in anticipation that it'll look right one day, or do you have it looking right?
No, we'd never hear the end of that.
But I will say, that was my first thing after turf and after video was to flip the bleachers.
Yep.
When we were over at Ula Golf or playoffs the other night, soccer, we looked in the sun, everywhere we go, whether it's home or the road, we're looking in the sun. So I thought. But I just don't have enough to flip it right now.
What about the lights?
LED lights will be the, as of right now, that's my first thing and yes, we do have enough for that.
What's that cost, do you think?
Hundred and eighty thousand, between one, I've got bids between one eighty and one eighty-nine, and that is the top of the line. Where you can control, I can turn them on from my phone, turn them off from my phone, you can set them to do a, they call it high performance. Where it goes along with the music, touchdowns, it scores all, I mean, it does all this stuff. For the color system of that, it's two hundred and forty thousand, you can add color later on. You know, very few schools have the, even at the D-one level, I think Alabama's still just white and OU, but you can add the colors, but. Being a black and gold, I didn't think we needed, so, but no, that, as of right now, some of the projects we're looking at. Would be the LED lights because I like that, it saves sixty percent on energy costs every time. Plus, there's a chance that PSO will help me on the installation of those, and so the cost could at worst be one eighty-nine. With sixty percent savings every time we turn them on, could be considerably less, we are looking at buying bleachers. To put in the corner of the end zone and for our band. They can play more freely, they can play, and I know it's, some of the people like to have them in the crowd, some of them don't. But I think for our growth and our band is killing it, they'll have their own section out there and so it would allow us to buy bleachers for the band out there. And, uh, start resurfacing, we got a few parts of the track that have kind of went underwater and eroded away, so. We will start after, when we select one of these two turfs. And when we select the video board, then with that, we will come up with a priority list of stretching that too. And the other part of that is we have to use that hundred thousand that they've already given us, so we actually have two point one, even though some of that's turned into.
So no matter what field you go with, you think you can get the lights done?
I'm very, yes.
And always the board and then some other stuff, so.
I believe that worst-case scenario, we will have the turf, we will have a very nice board, we will have LED lights. And we will have the band bleachers if that's our next priority.
Sound system included in that?
In the video board will be.
That's what I was, okay, so it's, yeah.
So if you, if you go with the Geo surfaces, I guess the question is. I mean, what could you do with that?
The, I think we could do the track, resurface part of the track that's been washed away, I mean, we literally came up with all of our, you know. Could we put a press box and anticipate, you know, upgrade our press box? We really can't, I really don't wanna upgrade our current press box because A, if you get too much bigger, you get into ADA compliance and you gotta put in all this stuff. I would like to put basically the same press box on the other side. I'd hate for the visitors to have a brand-new press box and we don't, but we're outgrowing that press box with Longhorn Media, with the other coaches, our coaches. It's gonna take at least two to three more people in the box Friday night to run this new video board because it'll have replay capability and all of that stuff. So we, the press box would be an option, but I don't know where to put a press box on top of the visitor's side and so. But eventually, and I agree with Dr. Cook, that is the thing that I keep hearing over and over, flip the bleachers, flip the bleachers. Well, we just can't literally pick them up and flip them.
No, they just.
It's, it's, it was gonna move those visitors into the end zone and buy the exact same thing, and that's what Scott or Sperry's done, it's what Catusa's done. They just leave the visitors at, they leave the home site as is for visitors and move the visitor, but we don't have it. And I will check into that, but I don't think we're gonna have near the funds at this point.
And we can't use the T-Mobile money for like air conditioning the high school gym, that's gonna be the next question we get.
At Friday Night Lights, it has to be outdoor.
I can, I can submit it and whatever we do has to be submitted, but they told me Friday Night Lights. Facility upgrades, now if we could convince them that Friday night is volleyball or ba, I don't, I mean, they, and they've been great, they may do that, they may do that, I mean, that is.
Cause what was our price on the air conditioning the gym, was that a hundred?
Uh, we budgeted for two fifty.
Two fifty.
But that was budgeted two fifty for air conditioning and to insulate it. And so.
All they can do is say no. All they can do is say no.
Absolutely, and to that point, the, uh, PSO will help us in some of that, in the installation because that's a big.
Energy saving.
If we, so if, if we save that money, that will, but I'm like, and they, and to Clint's point, they haven't said no yet. They haven't said no yet, so, anything.
I mean, this one gives us the most flexibility, don't you think?
Yeah, I mean, if you can do that, that would be, that would. I mean, I still think in the next five years it's not gonna matter, but, probably, you know, but.
What's not gonna matter?
The money.
The new prayer.
Yeah, so, I mean, probably less than that, but.
Yeah, that's what I said, I'm, I'm comfortable with Jeff making the decision he thinks is best overall for the facility and what he thinks, I think everybody wants to try to get as much as we can.
Right, I mean, I think.
I think that's the goal, I mean, if we replace the turf and they're like, that's all you got, you know, but that's a huge get.
And thinking about.
But at the same time.
Yeah.
An extra hundred, can you expand the locker room, can you expand the weight room, I mean, we've got a lot of equipment coming and there's no way we're fitting it in the locker room we got right now.
It's gonna be interesting.
Yeah, that's a.
Long-term on the field, I don't know that that's gonna be a big issue again, if, you know, the things that we think are gonna happen.
I mean, would you be comfortable with us authorizing you to make the decision that stretches our available resources the farthest?
I, I am totally fine, I mean, I feel like that's.
That's what I think.
I feel like that's part of my, and if I can't, I got a big, but I just also don't wanna put you guys in a bad spot. Because at the end of the day, there is no wrong answer, and that's what I want, there is no wrong answer. I could justify a hundred thousand for the Hellus because that's literally what the Dallas Cowboys, the LA Rams and fifteen other teams play on, literally. The Geo surfaces, it's the same, almost no one here will ever see the difference and it's a hundred and five thousand dollars difference, now I'll say this too. If given, if you guys don't have a preference, then I'll spend the next seventy-two hours and. Go back and forth and have a reverse auction and say, you're gonna have to come down, I mean, I've done it for four months because the first bid was one point three. And I've gotten them down and down and I, I've been on the phone all morning with video, I had a Zoom call at seven with the, with these guys. Seven fifteen with the video board, they're, they're working hard, so, if you have it, I don't have a problem, but I don't. I'm, I'm with you, I, I love the idea of a hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, in a pocket. Available, and I love the idea of Hellus, so. But I just don't know if it puts you guys in a bad spot.
No.
So if you will approve the TOPS and, so I, that would be my thing, is I would ask for you to approve TOPS because no matter what I do, I gotta do there. And or any, just approve the inter-local cooperation because at a time it might, there's a tips program that might for the video board coming into play, so approve. That I can join those and then tell me that, give me your blessing and, or which one you choose and I'll, either way is fine.
I make a motion to approve agenda item number fourteen.
Second.
Voting is now open, Ms. Wendy Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner.
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, no more discussion about there.
Yeah, I'm-
I mean, you, you got what you need from us on that?
If you're, I mean-
You're comfortable moving forward, what do you think's the best decision for everybody, yeah?
Okay. Agenda item fifteen, motion to approve or disapprove resignation letter of Jennifer Marlin, effective May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve agenda item fifteen.
Second.
Voting is now open, Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item sixteen, vote to convene or not to convene in the executive session to discuss agenda items A through D.
I don't need to go, do you guys need to go?
I'm good.
I make a motion not to convene into executive session.
Second.
Voting is now open, Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Okay, so that moves us to agenda item eighteen, motion to approve or disapprove renewal or tabling renewal of contracts for certified personnel listed on the attached list exhibits A, B, and C.
Make a motion to approve agenda item eighteen per the attached lists of exhibits A, B, and C.
Second.
Voting is now open, Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Doctor, or, Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item nineteen, motion to approve or disapprove renewal or tabling renewal for all non-certified personnel for the attached list exhibits D, E, F, and G.
Make a motion to approve agenda item nineteen, including the attached list exhibits A, exhibits D, E, F, and G.
Second.
Voting is now open, Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item twenty, motion to approve or disapprove employment of Lexi Byer, district nurse on a temporary contract for school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
She apologized for not being here, she wanted to, but her kid's on a field trip and she'd already agreed to chaperone it, so she'll be here at the next meeting to introduce her.
I make a motion to approve agenda item twenty.
Second.
Voting is now open, Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item twenty-one, motion to approve or disapprove employment of Kylie Day, paraprofessional, lay coach for school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve agenda item twenty-one.
Second.
Voting is now open, Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Agenda item twenty-two, any new business?
Just to remind you guys that the next board meeting and everybody will not be the second Friday, that's Coastal Week, it'll be June sixth, the first Friday at noon, and it's already been turned in the courthouse and you guys, so, next board meeting, June sixth. Instead of June thirteenth.
This meeting is adjourned.